School Board meeting is now in session. Roll call, Bob Britnall here, Brenda?
Here.
Anna?
Here.
Katie Lochner?
Yeah.
Bill?
Here.
Larry? Larry, I'm sure will join us. He hasn't mentioned to anyone that he wouldn't be in attendance. So would everyone please rise? And if so inclined, join us as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you. So in keeping with the regs set forth, I I am here in the boardroom by myself. Lori is working remotely, and so it allows me to keep the mask off during our during our meeting. In such case, someone pops in to attend, then I'll slap the mask on and we'll move forward from there. So I would like a motion to approve the agenda as shown. Jeff, do you have any additions that we should be talking about?
I do not.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. This is Katie.
All right, thank you, Katie. Second?
Second, this is Anna.
Anna, on the second. Other discussion? Paul, in favor of the agenda approval? Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Larry? Not yet. That passes by a five zero vote. We have no scheduled presenters this evening. Reports and communication, as far as I know, no committees have met at this point in time, nor do we have a new school board rep here, so we'll dispense with communication and reports and move down to administrative reports, starting with the elementary school. Hi Jen.
Bob, I do have a report from the GCED meeting this week. I attended that for Katie. Do you want that?
Yeah, let's back up here, excuse me.
Okay, that was last Thursday.
Sure, okay.
And let's see, I guess they were talking quite a bit about how to move forward in the fall, and they had done a survey, a family survey and staff surveys to see how people felt about that, but they they wanted to wait for the governor's recommendation, of course, and then they're going to have a brief meeting and come back together. The majority of the people, both the family and the staff, are in favor of face to face, coming back face to face, but with concerns or with distancing. And you know, the other option was full time or full full distance learning. And most of the people did not want to have full distance learning. But there again, they're not going to make a decision, but they're prepared to, they have a plan to move forward with a hybrid plan, if that's the way it goes, where they would have like 50% of the students attending every other week. And they have a plan for something like that happening. Like this, that's the main thing I wanted to report on. I know we're going to be talking more about that, the back to school plan too in our meeting.
Okay, any comments or questions for Brenda?
No.
Okay, thank you, Brenda.
And then also the, well, the Ed Foundation also met in July. And I was not able to attend the meeting. I don't have their minutes, but I know that they they had their nominations for their board positions. And they had two new members, Madeline Sondheim and Mary Wurches. Jeff, were you at that meeting?
Yep. Yep.
Was there anything else to report from that? Minutes, but.
They talked briefly about fundraising for this year, and we talked about some of the school needs, and I I just basically told them that our needs at this point are revolving around the pandemic. But we'd also encourage them to still plan for Eagle Bluff and some elementary items as well that could still possibly be held either remotely or or near the end of the year. So there is still hope anyway for that possibility, so we did talk about that as well.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on Ed Foundation? Okay, moving forward, elementary school. Jen, do you have anything for us?
No, not a whole lot. Just the secure entrance is the construction in the elementary as well underway, so that is very exciting. Just nice to be able to see it kind of all come together and our hopes and dreams for up in the security in that building, so. Where I guess I would probably say, I don't know, I would be lying if I said a random percent of where we're at, but we're moving along and it's really nice to see. So aside from that, nope, not a whole lot else to report aside from the unknown.
Okay. Middle school, high school. Tim?
About the same. I'm waiting for Thursday to hear exactly what the governor has plans for us.
Okay. Anything in technology to discuss? Same thing, we're focused on our pandemic issues.
Yep.
Okay. Stephen Strauss, are you with us? Anything to add if you are with us?
I haven't seen Stephen come in.
Okay. Community Ed and activities. Is Reed with us?
Reed is on vacation this week, so.
Dave Peterson?
I have not seen Dave pop in yet either.
Okay. Superintendent's report. Jeff, what do you have for us? A long list, it looks like.
Well, I have one item and the rest items are my thoughts on the action items, but in looking at the draft work that we've been working on administratively, this document has been shared, obviously with the board and with teaching staff, and this is a complete work in progress, as you can tell from what we started with, with the guidance coming in late June with our guidance on the three scenarios and changing just last week with the governor's mandate for Minnesota to be masking up when indoors, among other scenarios. This is going to be a work in progress over the next few weeks. But we do have it well on its way to coming into focus here. The principals and I and our cabinet members have been working diligently on applying this and following the CDC, MDH and MDE guidance. All hundred plus pages of that plus more. What I want to do is run through the three scenarios real quick. And there are some options in here I want the board to consider, and whether the board decides to make a decision tonight. If they don't, that's fine, but if what I'm asking you to do is to come to possibly a special meeting next week, then with this decision, and I can explain more the further we get into this. So I'll run through these scenarios and probably spend a lot of time on the hybrid scenario, because that's the one where a lot of the questions are going to come up that I'm going to need to have answered, I guess, from the board. The first person or the first scenario is the in-person learning for all students. And this is the scenario that we will create as much possible space between staff and students and have flexibility for parents and students who have a need or desire to distance learn. Within the learning environment, we will have social distancing, masking will be required when indoors, staff and students must be wearing masks. If they have special needs, we will try to accommodate those needs in various ways. But in the end, we will need to have some sort of barrier between people. At this point, we are still working on the grading system to be determined. We will be educating the students and staff on proper hygiene while in the building, and this education piece will come at the beginning of the year when we start the year. Desks and tables will be in rows with students facing forward, and small group work will be discouraged unless they are masked. Music, I believe, from what I read today, is still being worked on at the state level and even probably even the national level, but this is what we have so far for music. FIED along with music will be held outdoors when possible. And again, that guidance will change as data changes as well. Elementary specialists will be traveling room to room. Special ed interventions will be a push-in model.
Can you tell us what a push-in model is?
This is where the teacher goes into the classroom.
Instead of the kids going into the special ed room?
Right, instead of the kids traveling from room to room, the idea to keep all of the kids as much as we can together, and that's where we get into some of the questions with the hybrid situation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. In the elementary, we're looking at adding a section to each grade level, and we'll get more into this discussion in our hybrid area, but it will allow for more fluid transition between scenarios. And we would use existing staff if the funding allows because of the hybrid option. And again, more details on that as we get into the hybrid, because there's there's different elements in the elementary and in the high school with this. Our facilities will be closed to visitors unless an appointment is set in advance, and visitors must wear masks. The district office will act as a pickup and drop-off point for distance learning materials. Signage will be placed throughout the buildings and on the floors. Hand sanitizer stations will be available throughout both buildings. Daily cleaning of the facilities according to CDC and MDH guidance, along with more frequent cleaning of high-touch areas throughout the day, will take place. Bathrooms will be available, but social distancing will be encouraged. Water fountains will not be available, but the use of water bottles will be encouraged with our bottle fillers, and that's one of the things that we still have to figure out, because the fountains are attached to the bottle fillers. So it was just little things like that. Plexiglass dividers will be installed in the appropriate areas. The elementary entrance and exit plan with traffic patterns, this will be a one-way traffic pattern that will be defined prior to school beginning. In the middle school, high school, the middle school teachers will be traveling. The sixth grade will go back to an elementary model. And kids will look at carrying backpacks and not use their lockers as much as possible during the school day. Food service, social distancing is encouraged where possible. Food will be self-served. Plexiglass, sneeze guards and other applicable safety measures will be implemented. Food service is available by pickup or delivery for distance learning students, so those are the students that if parents or the students cannot come back to school for all in learning, either by their choice, if they don't feel comfortable, or if they have a medical condition that doesn't allow that, we still need to be able to provide distance learning options for those students and families. And therefore, we would also need to provide food service as well, along with technology like we did this past spring. The food service elementary setup, we would use the cafeteria and the gymnasium. In the middle school, high school, we would have a full atrium and cafeteria utilized, and what that means is that instead of just confining kids to the cafeteria, we would spread them all throughout the atrium for those lunches to get and keep social distancing. Transportation, this is kind of where the flying the only begins with, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard this throughout the state. Having kids on a bus for an hour, as close as we can have them. There are issues with that, and I think the governments are realizing that, both the federal and the state government. With the masking mandates, everyone will wear masks, and we will try to do what we can as far as social distancing on the bus. One of the things that we're going to ask parents to do, whether they put them on the bus in the morning or drop them off at school, is to monitor their health conditions other child before they board the bus or drop them off at school. We're going to have students loading the back of the bus first. And students will sit with their family members, and this will come into the reasoning behind that is going to be showing up in the hybrid option as well. We would also, at this point, and I can't emphasize this enough, is to ask parents if they can and would be willing to bring their children to school and pick them up from school on a daily basis to help with the safety of all involved, and we realize if you cannot do that, that is understandable, but as we get into a potential hybrid scenario, we can only have buses be at 50% of their capacity. And so what that means is if we are at 50% capacity on a bus, if we can't meet that, then we have to run more routes, and the problem with running more routes really is the lack of drivers. We have a hard time finding drivers during a normal school year. A lot of our drivers work other jobs during the day. And so we could run extra routes, but we'd have to find extra drivers for that. And the difficulty in finding those drivers should not be understated. Because if we can't find drivers, then we can't, then we're going to completely change our plan and how we're offering this. So that is one of our questions that we're going, a big ask of our parents throughout the community is if they can bring their child to school, that they would. Buses will be cleaned after each route is finished. The elementary departure time and setup arrival. Immediately release students when bus arrives. The first bus unloads at 7:45. And then we would unload one bus at a time. And then for dismissal, we would do a release of kids by bus route number for dismissal in the elementary. Middle school, high school departure and arrival setup, the main entrance will be the entry point for the building and the exit point. And we're looking at calling it out by routes for staggered releases as well in the high school. So the days are going to be a little bit longer because of that, by the time we get the staggered releases done. So kids may not be home on time as they have been in the past. During scenario one, with the all-in learning, childcare and canon kids will run as normal, following CDC and MDH guidance that is at the time. For employee and student healthcare, employees who fall into the vulnerable categories defined by the CDC should discuss this with a school nurse and supervisor. Distance learning will be offered to any enrolled students who may be medically vulnerable or otherwise unwilling to return in-person or hybrid learning. Options are available for material pickup and drop-off. And we were asking that they work with their building principal on this. Staff should monitor health conditions before reporting to work. Any health-related issue should be reported to their supervisor. Parents should also monitor the health conditions of their child before they board a bus or arrive at school. Any health issues should be reported to the appropriate office. Both buildings will have separate rooms for staff and students who present with COVID symptoms. So those children and staff members will be kept in separate area other than the nursing area, and those will be defined. We will also have a contact tracing program, which will be defined by the MDH decision tree. Athletics and activities, that is going to be we're going to get a notification of what is happening with fall athletics coming up on August 4th. Employees that have been, that have health-related concerns should speak to the school nurse and their supervisor for further assistance. There is a lot of guidance around this for our employees. And a lot of that information is going to be found in Lori's office in the district office. So if they're in need of information, we're asking them to work with their supervisor and with Lori in the district office for assistance in learning. We will also have this information posted on our website, and we will send it out to staff as well. Scenario two. Hybrid learning model. This model invokes strict social distancing measures enforced, and the building occupancy load is at 50% or less. And with that, we are working with IEA, which is our health and safety company, to define what those numbers are. They are stopping in tomorrow morning to complete their walkthrough. The first option that we have, and this is where the board, we need some guidance on this, either tonight or at the latest next week. Option one is for K through 12 students doing alternate weeks in school, week A and week B, based on student's last name, and that's where the busing comes in, because students and siblings will be kept together throughout the school day, if we go this route. We'd be looking at doing an elementary Monday through Thursday schedule with Fridays as teacher prep and enrichment and intervention time for students. In the middle school, high school, we would look at Monday through Thursday with Friday as distance learning and a block schedule. Currently, we're on a seven-period day, a block schedule would be a four-period block. And the reasoning behind looking at going to a block is for the safety of kids and a less intermixing in-between classes for students. So instead of having seven periods in one day, we would have four, there would be less travel time in between classes. The board would need to think on this option. There is an additional cost to this, moving from seven-period to a four-period block. A four-period block is an essential and eight-period day. So we would need to add some FTE. At this point, we are looking at overloads, not just hiring individual teachers, there would be overloads of existing staff. The best guess option that we have at this point is roughly $50,000 in overloads to allow for the four-period block. In this option also, it would allow for the building to be deep cleaned on Fridays. Option number two. And this is where it gets a little bit fuzzier even. Currently, we would be looking at having K through three or K through four, even K through five students in person with an added section to each grade level. When this was being created, we had just grades K through four. And we're looking at five through 12 students utilizing the A and B week, alternating by student last name as listed above. This is all pending the elementary building capacity numbers as defined by the state fire marshal and IEA coming in tomorrow. We feel very confident if we added a section for grades K, one, two, three, or K, one.
Three and five.
Three and five. We can accomplish meeting those numbers in those classrooms.
And I think the biggest piece here, Jeff, sorry to interrupt you, but I think the biggest piece is knowing that those sections because of how fluid this situation is, and we don't know how long we would spend in each scenario. It would only make sense to have that added section at each grade level, whether we're in scenario one, two, or three. And the reason behind that is because we want students to know who their person, who their teacher is, and to not have to switch back and forth, different, anything like that. So that's where, this is what I'm seeing in other elementary models.
There's a lot of elementary schools in the area that are moving to this model, using teachers that are in-house interventionists, and putting them back in the classroom to add those extra sections. Currently, we have three teachers that can go toward the total of five sections that we would need to add that would not add additional cost to the district, so we can do K, one and three. And Jen, please interrupt me here if I'm off-base on this. K, one and three, we could add or move staffing around in the building to accomplish that, for sure.
Yep, an added section at each of those grade levels.
In grade levels four and five, we have two interventionists that are fully grant-funded. And if we are able to use them with the grant dollars and not be penalized, I would suggest that we do that as well, if we can meet capacity numbers. If we are not allowed to use the grant dollars, this is where the board would need to make a decision on this to cover those grant dollars and/or not have those students coming in every day. They would go to the AV schedule. Helping out the primary grades does a lot of things. Obviously, having those kids in every day is good for them. And not to mention the daycare piece of that as well for families. If we cannot use the grant dollars to cover that, that's about $100,000 cost for the two staff members roughly.
And the reason we couldn't use grant dollars is they're specifically designed for one purpose, and we're stepping outside of that circle.
Yes.
But at the same time, you would, you could imagine, these are state grants or federal grants.
Yeah, and there's other schools that are looking at doing the same thing, and so that's going to put a lot of pressure on the government to make a decision regarding those dollars. Some of the ideas that I guess I have in the back of my head is how are we going to pay for this? For the $100,000 for the two elementary staff, and then the overloads of about $50,000. And mind you, this is all for safety at this point, to reduce numbers and to make it the best and safest environment for students and staff that we feel that we've come up with at this point, besides just completely staying at home. One, the federal government, even today, there was a lot of news that came out. They are looking at passing another CARES Act bill, if you will, that will send dollars out to schools. Again, granted, this is not passed yet fully. I would expect something to be coming on this relatively shortly on a decision, hopefully within the next week, because schools are going back and there is school funding that is tied to this for the reopening of schools safely. Two, the first CARES Act dollars. I'm working with the city and the county on the possibility of using some of their unused dollars that they received in that first go-around. And so there is that possibility for revenue as well. The other piece is that we this past fiscal year, we cut approximately $330,000 out of our budget for this coming year. Theoretically, you could look at using about half of that back towards staffing and then delay some of those cuts into the following fiscal year. If that makes sense. And there's a lot of moving parts here, obviously.
So this could cost the district $50,000 at the high school level, going to the four-period day, could cost us the district. It could also approximately another $100,000 to fund the elementary school with the hybrid model that you're showing us. If we get nothing from the feds, if we get nothing from city, and we get nothing from county. So the worst-case scenario appears to be $150,000. So the worst case scenario appears to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our budget. If nobody comes up with anything, including the federal government. Correct? And we would fund that if nothing pans out for us at any level, we would fund it potentially with the. Reductions that we made in this last school year for this school year.
In a sense, we'd be recalling some of those reductions to repurpose them, I guess is the best way to to put it. One of the things that we could do. If you're willing to do this tonight is. Approve the block scheduling piece, if you would. So that we can continue down that path. We would make the move to at least move the K through three. Into an all-in scenario for hybrid. And then we could wait to see what the federal government does and give us more time to work with the city and county on the cares dollars over the next week. And then meet again next week. To potentially approve that item as well.
Will be, will we be discussing scenario three at all?
Yes, we will, we will get down there, but scenario three is distance learning and there isn't. I mean, the hybrid learning model, as we go through this, I'll finish up the different options here, pre, pre kindergarten or preschool will remain as is in full time. And the same transportation rules would apply in the hybrid, so. In in regular scenario one and the hybrid and scenario two, pre K is going to be. As is in full time. Under a normal setting.
I have a couple of questions. So are we, are we trying to decide between going with option one? Or option two, like that they're separate, or are you saying that? The block schedule would be part of option two at for the high school, middle school? Is that, am I reading that right or?
Yes, the, the, again, this was created a week ago and trying to keep this somewhat similar of what people are seeing as we're passing it out.
Oh, sure.
And so. Option one basically is a strict A, B day, we would like to do the block schedule. In both options.
Okay, okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep, nope, that that makes sense to me. I also had a question about the students who. Are choosing not to come. In person, if that is what the governor allows us to do. Is that going to be something that they choose like they can't change from, you know, like if they choose to not come distance learning, can they switch mid semester? Do they have to wait a whole semester? Like, how are you going to handle? That kind of a thing, is that just for logistics of you planning or teachers planning for them? How does that work?
Well. We will be sending out a parent survey. Within the next week or so to try to get information based on what their choices are for this fall. And that may change from the time we send that survey out to the first day of school. And so we're going to try to do the best we can to gather as much information as we can. We may have to survey parents twice actually. Before school begins, just because they they have, they might change their mind. And I lost my train of thought about where I was headed with this, but.
I was just wondering if like they're gonna, if if like you choose to keep the at distance learning, if you make that choice for the year? Or if you make that choice for a semester or?
The students that are medically fragile. I'm pretty sure that will probably be an all-year distance learning piece. If people change their minds throughout the year, I wish that they would be in communication with us to see if that we can accommodate. Especially the numbers pieces.
In the elementary, it could be a little bit different.
Right, right. And I was just wondering if like that's, I I think that needs to be a clear expectation that. Gets sent out there that when you make a choice or whatever, but yeah.
That was one of the reasons for the block schedule at the high school too is. Would follow that block schedule plan regardless of which scenario we're in. If kids are distance learning at home and then they choose to come back to school because things settle down. They'd be able to work seamlessly back into a classroom.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a good point, Tim. The the block schedule would be year round, no matter what scenario we're in. If we added sections to the elementary, that would be the same year round, no matter what situation we're in or scenario. And we do have the space for that as well currently.
That's great. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Um, okay, so a lot of these things, as you move through this plan, the learning environment are are all pretty much the same. As they were in the regular learning environment, except for there will be strict social distancing. The facility pieces will be similar. The food service will be similar. Transportation will be similar. Again, we're going to be emphasizing asking parents to drop their kids off and pick them up from school if they can. That will help us tremendously with transportation, transportation, transportation is a big key to this, making these plans work. And we may have this all planned out for the learning environment and we may not have transportation. And that could cause problems with what we're trying to do learning wise. Childcare and Sack, Cannon Kids will be closed and we will open up our emergency care piece again for tier one workers following the CDC and MDH guidance. We may have to provide that during the school day if we have kids that are distance learning for whatever reason. Or if we're on an AB schedule and we have to provide that for some of the younger kids as well, depending on what scenario or what scheduling option we end up with.
I have a quick question about the the AB schedule, so if it's AB. And you are on the A schedule during the B week, there's no distance learning, that's just, you're just like off for a week.
No, there, there is going to be distance learning and I, and that was one of my tracks, I was, I kind of bird walked off of. We, we're going to have electronic devices in the classrooms that will show. The classrooms going on and kids will be distance learning, grabbing a hold of that zoom link. And that will also be happening, it may look a little bit different in the elementary because of how their classes are laid out. But we, that would be the hope to do that, that similar way as well.
Sorry, so then the students or the families that choose to do all distance learning, that is how it would work for them too.
Yep, yep, unless we're all distance learning, then obviously that's a different. As well. Okay, employee and student healthcare would remain the same athletics, we still don't know yet employees. That need help are encouraged to talk to their supervisor and or Lori in the district office. Distance learning for all, this would be basically the, what we implemented this spring. We would probably have obviously a new way of of doing things with the four block that would look a little bit different for kids. Instead of having to do seven classes in the high school, they'd be down to four classes. May look a little bit different in the elementary as well. Transportation will, food will assist food service as they did this past spring. Cannon Kids will be closed, we will have emergency care open. Employee and student healthcare, if people are having health related issues, they should still communicate with the school on what those are. If we are distance learning, I'm guessing athletics and activities will be postponed until further notice. And the final piece of this would be the employee looking for assistance. Granted, this needs to be detailed out a lot more and as we answer those little questions like what do we do with our drinking fountains that? You can't use the bottle filler if the fountain isn't working, we got to fix those little things as well. We're well on the way to. Getting Plexiglas into the building and starting installing that. We've bought a cloth mask for all staff and all students as more of an equity piece. To make sure that everyone has one to begin the school year. We will have disposable masks in case kids don't have theirs during the day. That'll be provided as well. The cleaning pieces are there. I think the biggest thing that I I would ask from the board right now, and if you're not comfortable making decisions tonight, that's completely understandable, but we do. Want some guidance on what the, how far the board is willing to go on this. As far as, I I would, I would ask that the board at least approve the block scheduling tonight as a recommendation for myself that. We start with that. If you are comfortable approving the two extra sections. In the elementary that we had talked about with the cost. It it would be, it'd be two more than the three, I think the three are given at this point because. Those staff can be moved into those areas for K, one and three. The grade two numbers are low enough right now to meet the guidelines as we understand them, correct Jennifer?
Yep, that's correct for at our, for what we're, I mean, a lot will be determined tomorrow, but. Based on our size, square footage per classroom. And what we already know. That grade level be under. Capacity.
Right, so I guess what I meant by two would be they would be for grades four and grades five. Would be the additional staffing and that's if the grant is not covered by the government. There was a lot there, obviously. Are there questions off the top of your head currently?
Jeff, I had a question on the transportation. Is it possible to look at that as cutting each route in half? Rather than going by the alphabet? I guess my thought there is that you can have a route with. M through T and you know, you're filling up a bus. And then you're struggling with changing the routes, whereas the route could stay the same. And you're cutting it in in half. For week A, A and week B.
Right, we would, if I understand your question correctly, for each of the routes. They would only pick up either A through M one week or M through Z, whatever the. The the split is on that. And so you're asking, are we, are we doing it that way or are we literally cutting that route in half? Like, we're not, we're not hauling these, these kids in like going out two miles.
Well, I guess, you know, you got route one and that that route normally picks up. You know, fifty kids, but if you go through the alphabet. A through M could be forty kids.
I don't think we're applying the the alphabet to the routes, right Jeff? We're going to have to read as, we're going to have to redo our routes.
We, there may be some, I wouldn't say completely redoing, but there may be some shifting of routes to balance out the buses. If that's what you're kind of getting.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm going with this because. The number of routes that you have and the inability to find more drivers is going to be. The catalyst for problems, so if we just kept the current route and saw where you cut it in half. By the the kids. Then you're really sticking with what you have and not the potential increased.
How do we, how do we do that with in-person kids then? So you know, like if you ride the bus, it's only A through on these weeks. Am I totally missing this?
Well, like I said, if if a route has fifty kids, normally you you know that already. Pretty much from. Year over year, right?
Don't necessarily know which grades they're in. Spread out in the classrooms.
Well, and I think that's where you have to work it backwards then, and so that's my thought is that a possibility. Because I think otherwise, doing the alphabet, we're really going to add to. The bus routes. Because then you're going to be forced to create a new route. Or double a route and create a stagger even more.
Well, if, depending on, if you're looking at the kids that are non-driving students in K through nine. Let's say, or don't have an older sibling that can drive them, that's going to hopefully help out with transportation as well. In this model. I I guess. We're going to have to adjust bus routes either way, I think, and we're kind of coming to that. Conclusion, and we've even talked about, well. Do we drop, do all the, all the country routes and bring those kids in and then turn back around? And send a couple buses just in town here, depending on, you know, how many we would need. And just do the town routes. And then come back and drop off a second time, we might have enough drivers just to do that. Instead of running separate. Complete routes again.
The the total numbers, if we're asking parents that can. To bring their kids in as opposed to riding the bus. So that might help numbers overall too, we just need to know. How many kids actually need the bus, I mean, because the 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 first thing I looked at was was that, because my kids are already on the bus for an hour each way every day. And I've, we're already trying to figure out what our transportation situation is going to be because it just doesn't.
Some parents, it won't work for some parents and we'll have to transport and that's fine. Some parents that will work, you know, great for, some parents will make accommodations because they don't. Want their child traveling with the potential of exposure. Either way. So I think there's going to be a lot of factors in to help that number stay down and that's the reason for the parent survey also to figure out. Who and who is going to be able to to bring their kids in and take them home? And who's going to be all on the buses during that timeframe? And even if we have, we could probably even get it down to where if a parent can bring them in the morning but needs help in the afternoon, we could probably even look at that. Depending on how we get that data in in the survey.
Have we reached out to Safe Link and Andy to talk through some of this scenario stuff? Because I I've heard some concerns from drivers. Based on their age. And I I'm wondering, you know, if we're already concerned about total number of drivers, if we're going to have some that decides not worth the risk. Was there a plan there?
At this point, we haven't heard that from Andy yet, and so obviously. He's a contractor of ours and so he, he needs to handle that piece of of his business as well. If we're finding and hearing from Andy saying that, you know, we have bus drivers because of the vulnerable. Guidelines dropping out and yeah, that's going to be a challenge that we may have to overcome as well. But we have, I, we have talked to Andy about this as well.
You haven't, he hasn't been part of these conversations yet. It's just, we're waiting until we know for sure which one we're going to go forward with.
Well, I think there's going to be, I've talked to Andy previous to tonight, obviously, on a couple of these different items. But some of it is going to be, we may have employees that that get right up to the beginning of school and and. Either have a medical condition or whatever that comes up that we're going to have to deal with at the last minute, I don't know how much. You know, if we're trying to plan and nail stuff down right now, I think that may be a losing battle. Unfortunately.
So Jeff has outlined the three scenarios as far as, as far as we know right now. Are we ready to make any decisions, for example, on the block schedule?
I would support that, I think that makes a lot of sense to. Have longer class periods and less commotion during the day, passing in the halls. Contact between classes. I would support that.
I think that's about the only thing I'm comfortable with going forward with as of right now until we have more. Specifics after Thursday, but I I agree, I think it makes sense.
If it makes sense, Bill, any input there?
Yeah, I I'm supportive of the block scheduling too, I I had a question as far as, does that create any flexibility with? Our current teachers in in the high school. As far as being able to move around also.
Tim?
Uh, is. I'm, I guess I don't quite understand.
Well, we, we made cuts, you know, with the intention for this year and, you know, with cuts like that. We're, we're always looking at licensure and, and that nature. Um, and so with, going with four classes. And the need for extra sections at the elementary school, do we have dual licensure, that sort of thing? With creating flexibility there.
We didn't, we didn't really have, um, you know, the, the cuts at the high school, the, the staff reductions at the high school. Didn't really impact what we're offering and, and doesn't, and, and this doesn't really impact that. What it does impact are, and this is something that, um, you know, we make this decision yearly based on course requests. We can look at bringing back a couple of high school classes that we were not gonna offer this year. And I, I did a, I did a trial run of this block schedule last week and, um. Like, for example, AP physics was a class that we weren't gonna offer because we didn't meet that threshold of student requests to offer for next year. We can bring that back. Um, we can bring back AP government, which is another class that didn't meet the threshold. Of the minimum number of students. Um, but then also there are, there are some opportunities. To increase sections of classes that we normally have to limit. So for example, industrial arts. And ag classes, oftentimes those hands-on classes have a, a, a maximum number of students we can schedule into them. Um, this gives us the opportunity to offer more sections so more kids can, can take those classes. If that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Or, are we gonna need to give our teachers more time to prepare? Not just for changing to a block schedule, but also. Plan for distance learning, because even if we move to an in-person model, there are going to be. Kids at every level that are gonna wanna do distance learning. Are we gonna build in more time for our teachers to prepare for that?
Yeah, uh, we've talked about, um, if we do get the block approved and, and teachers are requesting time to prepare for that. We can set up parameters around that and also, uh, for distance learning, we would offer it to all staff. We need to talk to our staff development committee. About that as well, because that is where that would come from.
This is kind of a big change, so I just wanna make sure that we're, we're giving them everything we can to, to make sure they're prepared.
And, and I think some of the. And, and I could be speaking completely out of, out of line here, but I think some of the PLC time throughout the year could be used for some of that as well. Maybe other instances that we could use, uh, time throughout the year to help with their staff development in those areas for ongoing as well.
In order for us to, uh, vote on a block schedule, we need to take this from a discussion item into an action item. So it's actually a two-phase process here. And if you're comfortable with changing that. To a block schedule, I would like a motion to change the discussion item to an action item on this particular piece. Will anyone make a motion that will ultimately have us vote on the block schedule?
I'll make the motion, Bob. Okay, I think it makes more sense.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion. All in favor of changing this discussion item to an action item? Bob, read it. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie? Katie?
Yes, sorry.
Yep. Bill?
Yes.
Larry, are you with us yet?
I haven't seen Larry come in.
So that passes by a five-zero vote. Now, the next motion would be to approve the block scheduling. Um, at the high school level. Correct?
Is it middle and high school?
Middle school, high school level. So again, look for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Katie. Second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. To approve the block schedule for middle school, high school. Other discussion. A yes vote would be to approve the block schedule. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a five-zero vote.
Bob, can I also ask the board if we are looking, uh, and I, I think it was Anna that said that she's not. Ready to, to vote on anything else, but would, are there people that may be looking to vote on something next week? If we get more information from the federal government on adding those two extra elementary sections? If that makes sense. And so we're gonna move forward with the three that we have in house already to do the K one and three. Cause two is already small enough, but, uh, the two extra sections, if the grant doesn't pay for it, the board, that means that the board is aware that they would have that extra cost. If the grant gets pulled away for that one year. You guys wanna have a special meeting to, uh, address that again next week? I think it's an easy add to what we're doing.
I think it's an important add. I don't think anybody will turn that down, but we just gotta find a time, don't we? Is, uh, next week, what do our schedules look like? Are we committed to the evening, number one, at the usual time?
That works. Our Monday's good for people?
Can work for me.
Monday works.
Katie, how are you doing?
I'm looking.
Mondays will work.
Monday should work for me.
Okay, so.
Monday at six?
Monday, next week would, would be August, what?
Third.
Third. We will hold a special meeting for further discussion. I guess it's an all-encompassing title there for further discussion on.
Yeah.
Scenarios and options, right?
What we're trying to decide is whether to. Add all, for all those sections, to add all those groups, to have an extra section.
I, with, there's a no-cost option right now with K one. And three and two.
I have a question about, I have a question about that. If they are specialists that are in place right now. And they're gonna go to teach a section, are there services that are gonna be lost as a result of them teaching a section?
There would be intervention services that we used, um, throughout the year. They would be our interventionists. Jennifer, are you still on?
Yep, I'm, I'm here. So right now we have it as, um, RTI, I have two. Teachers in, um, RTI and one in title.
Okay. So then, the students that are currently receiving those services would not get them. Because those are gonna be pulled to teach a section.
Um, that would be correct and, um, I would hope that my intervention teachers would, um, be able to help build capacity with my classroom teachers like they always have. So if they needed help.
To be clear that it's not like a one-to-one situation. We don't just have extra teachers hanging out. There are things that are gonna have to change in order for them to.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
But you will have a lot smaller class size too that, for attention to each student too. So that might happen in that situation.
Okay, so we will have a, uh, a special meeting for further discussion. On August third at six PM. As usual, zoomed. Okay, Jeff, are we, uh, finished with this? You gave your approval on your, all your other superintendent's reports. And you, uh, did Yeoman's work on reading a lot.
Yes, I think I'm done talking unless you guys have other questions and where this is kind of headed at this, at this point, so.
I think if we have.
At least on this topic.
We have a special session that'll give us ample time to, uh. I guess gather up all of our thoughts so we can bring them in next time. Anything we don't have settled so far? Next item is public input. I know in particular someone would like to speak with us and, um. I'm forgetting who it might be, but maybe there's an introduction that I could get from someone.
There is a, a person from the library.
That's okay, and I do not see him in our meeting. Matthew, are you in attendance?
I'm, uh, listed as Cannon Falls Library.
Oh, I know. Okay.
Matthew, the floor is yours.
All right, well, we just wanted to connect with schools to offer our support for the next school year. Um, we're concerned especially about access to, to materials for the students and the, the teachers. We also want to offer as a potential, maybe, I don't know if it's, it's something you can do, but we could offer some space. For things like special ed or interventions if there's a one-on-one, uh, situation required. We have. Some space, it's pretty limited, but we could offer for that. Um, we could also be, we would also like to offer ourselves as like a potential. Pickup, pick up and drop off spot. Um, maybe, I know they're not too far apart, but if it can help with transportation issues. Um, if somebody might be able to pick up from the library and not from the school, um, we could do something like that. We can also arrange for ordering of, uh, subject materials, books, curriculum from other libraries. And we can drop them off at the, at the schools. And we can also be a resource for the individual teachers if they're working on trying to come up with. Support for their curriculum, their classrooms and stuff. We'd like to offer our services for helping do some of that research too. Um, so I'm, what I'm wondering is, is there a specific contact person, um, for the media center? That I should be talking to? And is the space in media center planned to be used for classroom space this year?
Jen?
Um, sure, yeah, in the, in the library, no, that classroom space is not, um, planning to be used at this time. Um, all communal areas, uh, we're very limited if we can use any of those.
Okay.
Anything else? This is a very gracious offer. Anyone else have any input? Tim?
Uh, I would say just, uh, if you wanna reach out to me and Jennifer, we'd probably be the best point person for you. And if we can't answer your questions, we can certainly try to point in the right direction for things.
Okay.
Thank you for your offerings.
Well, and I, and our new, uh, children's librarian are working on coming up with a list of things that we can offer you. I know it's, it's been crazy, there's not, there's a ton of stuff for you guys to think about right now. And so just asking what you need is gonna be another thing for you guys, so we're just gonna come up with a, a list of things that we can offer.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Welcome.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else wish to speak to the board about issues concerning the school and the board? Moving along, consideration to approve the finance report. Josh?
Remember to unmute myself. Um, so we got here is the, uh, the cash flow, uh, position of the district currently. Uh, plugging in all the information from both, um, the ideas report and all that is out for, uh, fiscal year twenty-one from MDE. As well as, uh, our approved expenditure revenue budget as of the, uh, prior meeting. Um, a few things to note, especially early on in the month are, uh, especially you see the twenty seventeen A, twenty seventeen B. Twenty sixteen A, those are all debt service payments. Um, the one you won't notice there is the OPEB, uh, debt services. That is now, uh, complete and finalized. Uh, what you see here are the, the two seventeens are the refunding. Uh, that we did on the, uh, fieldhouse auditorium remodel. And the two thousand fifteen, we part of that LTFM, uh, eleven point five million dollar project that we did for the district. Generally, our debt service payments are set up where it's a principal and interest payment in the end of January, early February. And the payment at the end of July, beginning of August is an interest-only payment. So what you see there are interest payments on those debt service. Uh, obligations. Uh, also you'll see what happens in the start of most fiscal years. Um, kind of resetting of budgets is a lot of our leases are due at the first part of the fiscal year. So you'll see a lot of tech leases for devices as well as, uh, leases on buses. Um, I think in total right now, we've got six leases on buses. So as I go through, I try to indicate. Uh, which payment of three or five we're at for each one of those leases. Uh, one to note about the tech lease is, uh, currently there are three leases that came, uh. Or finalized at the end of fiscal year twenty and, uh, currently we're looking at, uh, not renewing those leases. But trying to extend life of devices on some and using some of those funds I've already, uh, set aside for leasing. Uh, and purchasing outright of devices and trying to go that direction. Uh, and keep it a one-year cost on those items instead of, uh, something that's gonna be tied to our budget for multiple years. Maybe a little bit more flexibility. It'll probably take a little while to, uh, convert from the, uh, present thinking of leasing. To just purchasing outright, but, uh, it is something that we're looking, uh, towards doing. We've had talks among the admin with. Um, otherwise you're gonna see a bunch of things that are pretty typical of business, day-to-day, uh, week-to-week for the district. Uh, payroll, payroll taxes, um, TRA, PRI type payments. And I usually try to include something of like when the ideas payments are due to come in, what that estimate is to be at. Usually those ideas payments are coming in on the fifteenth and the thirtieth of the month. Uh, what you see here is just a one-page version, so it goes through the end of September, uh, and shows about where our cash should be. If everything kind of were to stay consistent where it's at right now, uh, I do have it all the way through the entire fiscal year, uh, in the office. Uh, just in case you wanna see all those pages presented upfront. Uh, the way it currently sits, given, uh, financing as it is. As of today, we stay positive in cash flow for the entire fiscal year. Uh, obviously, if things were to change, whether the state were to, uh, defer payments and change their funding from a ninety-ten to something else. That's gonna throw a wrench into things. Um, if there are extra items that would cost, whether it be in addition of, uh, staff. Or even masses amounts of either technology for, uh, the distance learning requirements. Or even the, uh, PPE and all the cleaning that might take head, uh, that's gonna be in addition. Uh, to what we're looking at here, which would obviously then decrease the amount of cash flow. Uh, the big thing to realize and understand, cash flow versus fund balance. Is cash is the cash on hand and it combines all the funds that we have, uh, available to us. So, you know, within this cash balance, you'll see general food service, community service, uh, debt service. As well as the trust and agency. Um, when we talk finances and we talked about, uh, expense reductions last year. Uh, that was to affect the fund balance of the general fund and try to push us from a six percent, uh, fund balance. Towards our goal of that eight to twelve percent in the general fund. Uh, so while, you know, in total cash. Uh, we're looking fairly healthy, just remember that that's not quite exactly reflected what the fund balance is. Um, a little bit of information there, so if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer what you may have.
Any conversation on deferred payments at all?
I haven't seen anything yet. Uh, like Mr. Sampson talked about earlier, more of, uh, talks of how are we gonna fund? Some of these extra expenses are gonna be coming up for districts, um, whether it be the cares or the gears funds, uh, whether it be an additional. Second wave of funding towards districts that way, uh, even the discussions of being able to use. Available fund balances transferred from other funds that we weren't generally able to do. Uh, we don't have a lot of those types of fund balances to do, uh, transfers. But at least it gives us a little bit of options, but I have not heard anything of the deferred payments, uh, yet. And that's really more of a matter of. Where our, uh, state feels they are in terms of their budget and what they need to have for their cash flow.
Other questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to. Approve the finance report as shown. Anyone?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Bill, second.
I'll second, this is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the. A yes vote would be to approve the finance report. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda? Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes, sorry.
I will take that as a yes.
I was muted, sorry.
Okay, that is passed by a 5-0 vote. Moving down, consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In such cases, anyone wants to speak about any particular item, it can be removed for separate action. So in the past, you've wanted to recognize folks for acceptance of gifts.
Yes. I have that document here somewhere. Yes, we do have one donation this past month, and it is for 10 cubic yards of Shakopee red rock agri lime to be spread on the baseball and softball fields here at school, and the donor was Anderson Trucking. And it says Frank Hawks Field here, but I believe, I was told that it was also spread under the softball field as well. So we do want to thank them for their generous donation.
Thank you. Would you folks like a second to review the minutes for monthly bills? And so please take that time, and then when you're ready, I would look for a motion from someone to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Katie.
I'll second.
Second by Brenda. Other discussion? Yes, is to approve the consent agenda. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a 5-0 vote. No old business under new business. Consideration to approve the resolution calling the general election for 2020.
Yes, this is an election year, and this is part of the election process. And so the board would need to pass this resolution relating to the election of the school board members and calling the school district general election for this coming year.
A very procedural item. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion. Second?
I'll second. That's fine.
Brenda? I heard your voice in there. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? Katie, do your thing.
All right. Resolution relating to the election of the school board members and calling the school district general election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota as follows. One, it is necessary for school district to hold its general election in, for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each. Two, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the third day of November 2020. Three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A-11, the precincts and polling places for this general election are those polling places and precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as those for the state general election. Four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said general election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part at least 74 days before the date of said election. The notice shall specify the date of said election and the office or offices to be voted on at said general election. Any notice given prior to the adoption of this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Okay, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Thank you. Consideration to approve the Family Medical Leave Act request beginning October 8th of 2020.
Hang on just a second. I want to double-check these before I give out names. That's usually a good idea. I forgot to do that before the board meeting. My apologies. Lori just texted me.
There you go.
The first one is Ariana Larson. You'll be approving for a Family Medical Leave Act.
I'm going to approve.
Moved by Brenda.
Second.
Seconded by Anna.
Yep.
Thank you. Other discussion? All in favor of the medical leave act? Read it. Excuse me. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ms. Larson's request is approved by a 5-0 vote. Number three, consideration to approve Family Medical Leave Act request beginning November 13th of 2020.
This one is for Morgan Schwartz.
Do I hear an approval?
I'll make one.
Bill, barely. Anna, would you like to second that since you were in there? Yes. Motion by Bill, seconded by Anna to approve this leave. A yes vote would be to accept this. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 dairy proposals. That's on page 25.
We received one bid when we went out for bids, and the cost sheet is in there. And I recommend approving.
What is this? How does it change? Usually they give us the change from year to year. Has that been?
Well, so I would have got here with just the one bid. Generally, what we get in our dairy clauses is an escalator clause, depending on how the market is with milk. So we've got their bid up on the top right corner based on fiscal year 20, you approximately what the cost would end, end up being. The middle section is what the escalator clause either cost or saved us in the last year. We've actually come out pretty well on the escalator clause over time, and we usually end up to the good on that side. Much to, you know, Plainview Milk, or in the past, Tasing Co-op Milk, same company. They do a good job of placing their bid and staying pretty close to what that cost is. The bottom is more the usage that's in our district, and we're a heavy chocolate skim milk drinking group of people here. So because what I wanted to show is the increase from the prior year in each one of the milks that we use. And even though the white skim milk is increasing over 4% for next year, the chocolate skim milk is what we really drink a lot of. So it really puts that true increase of what the per carton is at under 1%, like 0.63% increase from the prior year. And in terms of what we're seeing in other food costs, fuel costs, utilities, that's a pretty good conservative increase. So even though they are the only bidder, very highly recommended, they do a very good job with our district.
They've been good partners with us.
Yes.
One and only bid, so I would look for a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion.
Anna on the motion, Katie on the second.
Yep.
Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve that contract with Plainview. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 student handbooks for both elementary and middle school, high school.
Both the elementary, middle school, high school versions are there. I don't know if the principals want to speak to them currently or not, or if you guys have questions about them. We finally got them to look the same, so that makes feel, or makes us concrete sequential people feel a lot better about ourselves so that they're not looking different.
Yeah, as a rule, we've always run through any changes from the previous year. What are we seeing? Anything?
In the middle school, high school, the only change is format. And then changes in fees, like lunch fees have been updated and.
Yep, that's the only thing in the elementary is the fees.
So the legalese remains the same. And it's fee-related.
Yep.
And thank you to Dorothy O'Reilly for taking on that formatting job for me. The file that I was using was corrupted, and so I couldn't, I couldn't open it up. So she was kind enough to reformat this like the elementaries. So now we're like the elementary school.
That's good.
Well, any like addendums or anything need to be added to this based on what we end up doing as far as a format for this fall? I know we, there, there was some talk in the framework about grading needs to be determined, and I see we have grading in the handbook. Will that need to be updated, or will we just provide?
No, I think we'll do, if, if there is any grading guidance from the state, I think we can do that like we did with distance learning in the spring, and we'll run that by you guys. But not make it necessarily make a change. Depending, you know, kind of the way I'm looking at grading is if we're in scenario one or two, we're probably not going to do anything different with grading. It would only be if we're in distance learning for a significant period of time where we might make some changes.
Okay, other questions on the handbooks? When you're ready, I would look for a motion to approve the student handbooks for the elementary and the middle school, high school.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Katie?
Yes.
On the second? Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the handbooks for both the elementary and the middle school, high school. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 mandatory list of policies.
Each year, the board approves these mandatory lists of board policies. And I recommend that we approve these.
None of them appear, would appear to be anything other than what they've been in the past. We're just doing our procedural yes to the policies as, and they're on the, they're on our website as well, aren't they, for review?
Right, and I know this MSBA updates their list of policies usually around this time of the year, but obviously there's been other things going on. And so we may be passing these through policies again, but we will notify you of any changes as well, obviously.
Sure. Look to approve the 2021 mandatory list of policies. Motion?
I can motion to approve them.
Thank you, Katie. Second?
I'll second.
Second, Anna? We have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the policies. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 annual list of policies as found in Policy 208 Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies. Sounds like a very full.
Policy 208 says that the board needs to annually pass these list of policies as well. So I recommend approving those as well.
Seems kind of like, kind of redundant, but I guess it's what it is. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? A yes vote would be for approval. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a 5-0 vote. Consideration to approve the 2021 Restrictive Procedures Plan from G C E D.
I would pull up his document, but I can't get around Zoom. There we go. This is a document that all of the school board or school members of G C E D need to pass by their school board for the Restrictive Procedures Plan for sped and staff.
Questions or comments? Jeff, anything in addition to?
Nope, I recommend approving this. This is an annual thing also.
If I remember correctly, there weren't many, there were not many changes on it when we went over it in the G C E D meeting.
Yeah, mainly seeing.
Mainly just dates, and a couple of times, there's just a different verbiage of wording.
Yep. Sherry does a good job with keeping this updated, especially in the, in the legal pieces as well.
Yep.
Katie, you're making that recommendation for approval in it.
Yeah, I will, I will make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion, Brenda on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote will approve the Restrictive Procedures Plan from G C E D for the upcoming year. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, yes.
Yep. Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. Did I go the right order there? That passed by a 5-0 vote. Okay, moving along. Consideration of the resolution approving District 252 Cannon Falls Area School LTFM 10-year plan.
Yes, this is an annual thing also that school districts have to pass in their district and hand into the state before the end of July. This is our long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan that shows the expenditures and revenue allocation. This one is for the Cannon Falls Area Schools District specifically. And then the next agenda item is the same type of plan but for G C E D. And the board will have to approve, obviously, both plans if we want money. But specifically, the G C E D plan, because if one school does not approve the plan, then G C E D would lose its LTFM funding. So it's very important that with these passed.
Okay, tackling this one at a time.
Yes.
Any, any questions or concerns about our local district's long-term facility maintenance plan? Any questions, comments? Conversation that you'd like to have? If not, I would look for a motion to approve it.
Is this a resolution?
Yes.
Yep.
There we go.
Does he need a motion for the resolution?
Motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Brenda on the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anna. Any other discussion? Clerk, you're up.
Resolution approving School District Number 252 Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan. Be it resolved by the School Board of District Number 252, State of Minnesota as follows. The School Board of District, School District 252 has approved the Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan for the Cannon Falls Area School District. Number 252 Facilities for 2020 through 2030, the various components of this plan are attached. So for vote, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. The second one is, has been dealt with by Jeff as well. It's for the G C E D Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Katie. Second?
A second.
Thank you. Anna on the second. Any other discussion? Clerk?
Resolution approving school district number zero six zero five one long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan, be it resolved by the school board of of district number two five two, state of Minnesota as follows. The school board of school district two five two has approved the long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan for the Good Hugh County Education District six zero five one facilities for two thousand and twenty through two thousand and thirty. The various components of this plan are attached. Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the high school math text quote.
And maybe Tim wants to talk about this a little bit. I don't want to step on his toes, but I am recommending that we make this or approve this for the high school curriculum for math. Tim?
Yeah, it's been an interesting process, given that the majority of this was done during COVID. And in fact, for those of you on the curriculum committee, I apologize, but this didn't even go to you guys yet. So McGraw-Hill, Glenn Co. is part of McGraw-Hill now, and that's the current text that we use and the math teachers wanted to stick with the same textbooks. This includes a physical textbook for every student plus six years access to their online materials for that time. So if it's with our, what we've been doing with electronic access to to our text materials as well.
And and I guess I do apologize that that this had ran through the that committee, but my.
No, we haven't really met.
Okay.
Given COVID, so.
Gotcha.
Okay, any discussion on this item? If not, I would look for a mo- oh, okay. Somebody make, make a comment? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the text quote?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
On behalf of the curriculum committee that hasn't met.
Thank you. Motion by Anna. Do I hear a second? Second?
Okay, I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. So we have a motion, the second, to approve the high school math text quote. A yes vote would would be in favor of Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. Thank you. Consideration to approve the two thousand and twenty-two audit proposals.
With our audit contract up, we're looking at bringing you a couple of quotes to look at. One is from our current auditor or the one that's been doing it the past few years from Abdo and a new author that has previously worked in Cannon Falls, Smith Schaefer. And I have worked with Smith Schaefer as well out of the Rochester office, and it's my understanding that Cannon Falls used to use the Red Ring Office as well. And so here are the quotes for the two companies of what they would charge us each year. Obviously, you can see the price differential there. I would be comfortable working with either of these. And Josh, I don't know if you want to speak to this as well.
Yep. Got a little bit of misnomer. I guess I got the the year that would be paying the bill instead of the audit. Fiscal year twenty-one and actually auditing the fiscal year twenty books, but you kind of get the gist of what's going on there. Smith Schaefer has worked with the G C E D and Red Ring Schools, so that's our kind of relationship with them. Have met Steve Selverson before at S S C and they did quote us about ten years ago in audit. I'd like a Myers. They've done our audit now the last about twenty years in terms of working with them. Fantastic to work with. Obviously, we've got our lingo down with each other and got it down into a a pretty tight package in terms of their field work here. But obviously, you see the the cost difference there too, and obviously can work with with either one, but don't know if you were there. If you have any questions, I can definitely answer whatever you, whatever you have.
Just because of our our long-term relationship with Abdo, did you ever approach them to see if that was a they could match that bit of Smith Schaefer? And is that even fair to ask?
Yeah, I I went back a little bit back and forth, you know, I did talk to Brad today. Brad Fultasak, you guys have seen him many times in board presentations. I've been doing actually the audit with him. He started out twenty years ago when we both were doing this together. You know, the in terms of, that's a big difference for them to close, you know, to ask them to drop a a couple thousand, they may have been able to do that, but that's a, that's a big gap to close. He had actually gone and looked back at you know, past audits and how much the the cost was and they haven't been at that sixteen to five number for a long time. So just be, it'd be difficult for them to go that that far down. You know, that being said, obviously, they'd like to continue to work with the Cannon Falls School District, and they know that the price of their audit is competitive with others. But Smith Schaefer, as you you see there, it's really hard to compete just on price alone to to not view that way. And and they do a quality, quality work as well. Mr. Sampson's had them do his audits, other districts, Southland as well, so both kind of have a a good product for us.
Anyone have any questions for either Josh or Jeff on this? If we're doing our due diligence here, we would, we would certainly look at the low bid and especially if we've got some historical data on them and.
Yeah, that's nearly a twenty thousand dollar difference over the three years.
Yeah, you know, all these kinds of setup, you know, the year two is dependent on how year one goes, but essentially it's re-audits for two with Smith Schaefer.
Yeah.
So we should look for a motion from someone to approve one of these two entities to prepare our audits for the upcoming three years.
And and with me using Smith Schaefer in the past, in case you're curious, you do get the same audit number booklet, and you also have a presentation done as they've worked with me in the past as well. So it's it, the presentation slides will look relatively similar as well. So just so that you have that information.
To make a motion to go with Smith Schaefer, sorry.
Brenda has made the motion to go with Smith Schaefer.
I'll second that motion.
Brenda? And Katie? Other discussion? A yes vote would be to have Smith Schaefer be our auditors for the upcoming three years. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. I would hope that someone in the admin department could acknowledge the like for us and and we can welcome Smith Schaefer.
Yep, definitely.
Thank you. Consideration to approve the two thousand and twenty-two non-teaching staff contracts.
At this time, we have one more support staff contract with the custodial crews to approve at the two point five two and the three point one six total package. And we are still, we're meeting with the pair of professionals again tomorrow.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the custodial contracts for the next two years.
I moved.
Who'd we get? Anna?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll second Katie.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? A yes vote, we to approve the custodian contract. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Passes by a five zero. Consideration to approve the two thousand and twenty-one letter of agreement addressing compensation of coaches and co-curricular activities.
With the way that our spring ended last year, we wanted to be a little proactive, and so I met with our union leadership and discussed this agreement and came to an agreement between the two entities. This document was an MSBA created document that was sent out to us, and the only change to the document is down here in the prorata compensation that talks about if there is a suspended season or a canceled season or a shortened season during two thousand and twenty-one, the the assistant coaches would be paid prorata, and then the head coaches and the head advisor positions will be paid in full. Those head coaches and head advisor positions do a lot of work year-round, as do their assistants, but I think that a lot of that responsibility falls on those head positions and head advisor positions as well. And so we had a good discussion around that and came to an agreement on this document and would like to pass this through the board as a as a letter of agreement between the two entities on this upcoming school year, because we will be going in and out of school, I'm guessing throughout the year.
Okay, team, any questions? Look for a motion to approve. I, you know, personally, I think this is very fair. I was on the receiving end as an assistant coach this spring. I was paid prorata for the two weeks that I was there. That seemed more than fair to me, but I know how long the head coaches work for their season and advisors as well. So I think it's incumbent on us to recognize them for their off-season efforts, for lack of better. So is there a motion to approve this letter of agreement? Sorry.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Bill? Second?
A second.
Second by Brenda? Other discussion? Okay, yes vote would be the approval of this letter of agreement as shown. Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. Passes by a five zero vote. Now, consideration to approve the two thousand and twenty-one fall head and assistant coaches.
Yes, with this agreement in place, I'm asking the board to approve the head coaching and assistant coaches for each of our sports, and you'll see that there's one to be, or actually two to be determined on here yet, and Reed is working on that.
Take a second just to review. There's a lot of names on there, and when you're ready, I'd like a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, there's more to be determined in football as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of coaches.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second.
Anna on the second? Other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the coaches as shown. Bob? Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a five zero vote. Okay, we're nearing the end of a long night. Please make sure that you've got your August third date set on your calendars, and we will only have one agenda item that evening, and that will be further discussion. So having said that, does anybody else have anything for the cause? If not, I would make, I would like a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Anna on the motion to adjourn? Second?
A second.
Seconded by Brenda? Other discussion? It's a long night when you got to read names all the time, but that's what we have to do. A yes vote would be to end our meeting. Bob? Yes. Brenda? Yes, Brenda?
Yes, yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Sorry to coerce you. Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, very busy night tonight. Expect expect more on August third. Come engaged, come with questions as you have them. So we would, we will now adjourn. Thank you for attending, and thank you for all the support from the people who just sat in and listened, and thank you to Matthew for his library proposal or assistance. We are adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Good meeting.